I'd like to call a regular Board of Education meeting to order. Please grant us the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your bottomless religious stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, please do the vocal.
Ms. Flynn, here. Ms. Hewer, here. Ms. Hatchin-
The lead.
Mr. Rakowski-
The lead.
Mr. Tseng-
Here.
Mr. Wolf-
Present.
Mr. Zoff-
Here.
Ms. Gadsden-
Here.
Mr. White-
Present.
Butter, please, Emery.
They're in the rear of the LGI.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with the Civil Service Employees Association, dash Nurses Unit, for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with the Beacon Teachers Association, and to seek legal advice from the school attorney, state law attorney, client pledge.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
Thank you for your patience.
We're gonna start out with a workshop, Emery has some board members to recognize.
Thank you. Okay, so I have two certificates, Board Appreciation Award. One goes to Kenya Gadsden for going to School Boards Leadership Development Training. So, I want to present the award. And I also have an award for Mr. White, who doesn't want to be publicly recognized by the committee.
If you were to be chosen, this is what you would get.
That's your incentive. Incentive, okay. That's care in front of me.
All right, reviewing the agenda, we do have some corrections to the agenda. On 11.05G, it was a... It was a salary adjustment. The salary was adjusted from 72 to 75 for the per diem. 11.08 was the... Thank you, bank reconciliation. And the corrected version is attached to the electronic board docs. And then we're also going to have an addendum to the agenda, which will be... Kelly will do that as 12, and then 12 will go to 13. All right, we'll do it as 12.01. The first addendum will be 060517A, then 060517B, then 060517C. 12.01, and three, correct. And this is... I read it at the time.
Yeah, I think you read it at the time.
I'll read it at the time. Okay. Do we have any student or school presentations? Do we have any parent groups?
Yes.
Hi, Lori.
Hey, everyone. I missed you all. Hi, I'm Lori Murtagh. I'm here to talk on behalf of Beacon ArtsNet Foundation. This week is the Calico Ball, the 28th Calico Ball here in Beacon. It's Thursday, June 8th, at Beacon High School, right over there, at 10:00 a.m. And I want to reiterate my invitation to all of you. I hope you all will come. And also want to relay from Livia Vaniver, who I spoke to today, that she also hopes you all will come. We invited a bunch of people from the community, including our city council members and also some local politicians, and we are hoping to see some of their faces on Thursday morning. Just wanted to get up. I should've probably come a couple meetings ago to give you a little more advance notice, but I hope you will be there. But I wanted to come up and give a thank you to everyone who sponsored the ball this year. And there were many, many donors, but just to name a few, I want to thank all of the PTAs, PTOs, and PTSOs from the different elementary schools. You know, they all work very hard to give us a very, very generous donation to help fund the ball every year. Also, we got a really generous donation from the Beacon Teachers Association, so I'd like to thank them as well. The We Play Community Project, that does a lot of work here in the community for the parks, and working with the Rect Department, also gave a very generous donation. I want to thank them. And also, community members, parents, businesses, especially individual donors. We sell ads, as you may know, in the Calico Ball booklet, to help fund the program. And a lot of businesses stepped up this year, and a lot of new businesses, which we do have, an increasing amount here in Beacon, which is great to see, everyone wanting to support the kids. I did a lot of personal interaction on Main Street, and it was really heartening to see the level of enthusiasm that a lot of people have for the kids in the school district. Of course, many people in town did the ball themselves when they were growing up, or, you know, their kids did years ago, or they are going to, or they're doing it this year. So, that was a really nice way to kind of meet people and see how much the community really loves and supports the Calico Ball. I also want to give a special thank you to Karen Kellogg for helping us. She was a really great coordinator this year and helped us connect the dots, not only with Vaniver Caravan, with all the work she did with the Bosse Coaster. It really cemented for Anna and I... Anna Berg, I should mention, is my co-chair up there. It really cemented for us the real need for an arts and education coordinator going forward in the district. That's a lot of legwork that, you know, parents and individual citizens can't do as well when we're not in the school district. So, it's having somebody on the inside to coordinate that stuff really goes a long way for us, and ultimately saves us money unless it's bring more programming in when we're using the coaster. I'm really, really proud to say that we exceeded our goal and we raised over $14,000 this year. That's a lot of $50 business card ads. But really, you know, there's a lot that goes into raising that money, and we're really excited to be able to bring more programs in next year with the additional money that we raised. And in conclusion, I just want to say that, you know, this is the conclusion of Anna and my first year being co-chairs of Beacon ArtsNet. We've really enjoyed it, and we've gotten a real sense of the challenges, but also the possibilities. And it's been very, very inspiring. Meredith Hewer kind of bushwhacked the trail for us. My analogy of the day is Meredith came in with the machete and blazed the trail, and we've been treading that trail for several years. Now we've got a nice worn path going, and our goal is to pave that road, which is an inroad to the school district, so that we have a real partnership with you and with our new administration to really be partners going forward with this and to make this grow. And to gain the recognition that the arts play an integral role in improving academic outcomes for all students, and that includes the core subjects. I think that what I've learned in my experience with not only the kids and the parents here in Beacon is that you see that when kids get a chance to work in the arts and think creatively, it helps them in very many ways that we don't always recognize. And it might not show up in a data-driven kind of approach, but the truth is, is that when kids love school and love creating and feel free, then they perform better. And that's it. Thanks again. See you Thursday.
Thank you, Lori. And Anna, on behalf of the board, thank you for going out and raising so much money for the Beacon Schools, and we look forward to continuing the partnership. I know I speak for the whole board with that comment. Any other parent groups? Open to the public? Jillian?
Good evening. Jillian Rompilawan, parent at Forestal. To the Beacon Board of Education, the parents of current second graders at JBF Elementary School are deeply concerned about the class sizes for our children, and we're asking the board to consider adding a third teacher to the JBF for the upcoming school year. As you're likely aware, there's a disparity among the elementary schools in this regard. While other schools in the district have class sizes of 17 to 20 students, our second grade classes have 25 and 26 students per class. This is a significant difference, placing the class sizes at JBF beyond those which are prescribed in the New York City Class Size Contracts for Excellence Law. While we recognize that this law is not applicable outside of New York City, we also recognize that these numbers exist to optimize student gains, and we all want our children to have the benefit of a quality education. Common sense can tell us all that 26 eight-year-olds in a single class is an awful lot of needs to meet and manage. Our kids and teachers feel the impact of these overcrowded classrooms, which at Forestal are quite small. The benefits of the smaller class size are well-understood, broadly demonstrated, and far-reaching. Students who are assigned to smaller classes, particularly in the elementary school, perform better by virtually every metric. They have fewer absences, better grades, and better scores on standardized tests. In particular, large class sizes hurt economically disadvantaged students, as well as students of color, students like many of our own children here in Beacon. A Brookings Institution study demonstrated that reducing class size can shrink the achievement gap by approximately 38%. Students in smaller classes also have lower dropout rates, and these gains are most demonstrable in populations who face economic hardship. A study published in the Journal of Educational Psychology in 2005 showed that the graduation rate of free lunch eligible students nearly doubled. This impacts our significant number of children at JBS. We know that Beacon has gone through many demographic changes and faces many challenges. We also know that the future of our children, and by extension, our community, depends on how we decide to handle those challenges. Next year will be the first year our children start taking the New York State standardized tests. Their performance will impact Beacon's standing and potentially our funding. We hear so much about graduation rates and how earnestly the board wants to see them improve. Reducing elementary school class size is a proven way to move toward this goal. We implore you to make the investment into our children today, get them out of these crowded classrooms, and give them the quality educational experience they deserve. We know that with a fair opportunity, they will repay you in dividends. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we're gonna go on to the interim superintendent report. However, I just did want to point out that we do have Dr. Matt Lando over at the end there. He made his way down from Mexico. He'll be starting officially July 1st. So, he was able to be down, so he's sitting at the table. I just didn't want people watching or people here wondering, "Oh, the guy was in the main place over there." All right.
Okay. Just a couple of items. I want to remind everyone, we did put this on the website, and there will be memos to go out, that we will have two half-days for the elementary school and Rombout on Wednesday, June 21st, and Thursday, June 22nd. There'll be more information on the website, but I wanted to say publicly. And I know the board had asked about the time for graduation, and that's at 9:30 on Saturday, June 24th. So, just 9:30. I also just want to remind everyone, just to check the calendar, there's a lot of great year-end activities. Cicilia, Eric, and I have been out and about, splitting it up, and just enjoying all of the concerts and awards and recognition for the end of the year, and we're just starting. So, the next couple weeks, we're gonna be extremely busy doing that, and I'm hoping that we get to see a lot of you there. I want to share some good news, that the TEALS grant was approved. There was a meeting with the regional coordinator, and there's some guidelines that are being met with the high school staff. Ms. Sims, who's our assistant principal here at the high school, will be the contact person for the grant. And they have met with some interested community partners, and they're still doing that process. So, if there's any interested community partners, that they have to apply for the TEALS program. But it's just the start of it. I do want to mention that we are the first district accepted north of New York City that's in New York State, so we're pretty proud of that as well. So, more information to follow on that. An update? We... Mr. White asked to do an update on the interview process for elementary principals. So, there was a committee on Friday, and one of the reasons Dr. Lando's down here today to attend the meeting, but also he and I will be doing final interviews tomorrow, so we should have a decision pretty quickly after that.
Were there parents on the interview committee?
Yes. There were parents representing both Forestal and Glen. That's it.
All right.
Just related to the TEALS grant, is that since it's offering Introduction to Computer Science, how is that going to get communicated to the high school students, that that's available to them?
Okay, I'll defer to Celia. So, who's gonna talk about guidance?
So, our guidance counselors are aware, and they've been having discussions. They have a course description. This will be the first of an elective sequence. We'll start it as a half-year course that, with enough student interest, will be run fall semester and spring semester. And then from there, and we worked with the TEALS regional coordinator and talked about a plan to scale it up in sequential years, and it'll allow us the opportunity to grow this ultimately into AP Computer Science coursework. The original course, the first course, which is where we'll start next year, will be offering opportunity for students to learn how to program and code. And so, this is a really exciting opportunity, but guidance has awareness and has been having some discussions with students. And they've been working on scheduling as an administrative guidance and math department team. And so, we received a lot of acknowledgement for the logistical planning that we had done even prior to, and that is what helped us secure being accepted into the partnership program. The curriculum will be provided through the Microsoft program. It's not exclusively based to requiring the use of Microsoft products. So, again, because of our technology setup with having our wireless cards, labs, and we can use them on Google platforms, again, technologically, we were set for some of their prerequisite requirements of schools. So, it's great news all around. We're all very excited and excited of the possibilities to grow this into new opportunities for our students.
Yeah, it's really exciting. Thank you for that. I'm wondering if you're excited how you're going to recruit volunteers for the...
So, Mr. Riley, as well as the administrators, had some discussion. They reached out to some folks within the community that they knew. They also, within and among some of our teaching staff here, have connections to some folks within the community that come in and do some... that have engineering backgrounds, as well as computer science backgrounds. And so, they were engaging in those conversations. So, I know they've done that. There were a few folks that had an interest, and we're gonna make the application to TEALS. TEALS will... the project will also work with us if that doesn't work out. But the first step is that those volunteers and community resources for us have to go through a vetting process through Microsoft that doesn't involve us. But we're, you know, certainly... they felt positive from those initial conversations that we may have some resources.
So, there won't be any sort of public posting? It's only people who know people that might hear about this?
They've done it as a word of mouth, certainly. We have information about, you know, encouraging folks to go to the TEALS website, and we can continue to make that an accessible link, you know, for others who may be interested.
So, there's a link on our website, or could there be any...
I'll have to look, because I don't want to misquote. If it's not there, or embedded in prior, you know, announcements, we can put it in the forefront of district announcements. But I know that there were a couple that were going to look into it. And some of the folks, maybe folks that have done some work with our high school students and some of our teachers in some past projects and some classroom visits and supports. But certainly, if anyone knows of anyone, we want to encourage anyone who may have an interest to look into it. So, we'll make that link available.
Okay. So, I have a correction. The graduation is at 9 o'clock? So, it's 9 o'clock, and it is at Duchess Stadium, so I do want to mention that as well. So, we gotta get up a little earlier. No. We usually set up the gymnasium in case it rains. We hate to say the word rain, because we've been on a great run, because there'll be tickets. Right, well, there'll be tickets if it's inside, so we don't really want to think about that, so...
Well, comments correct? Any reports?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, on the graduation, it would be just nice to know what the protocol is for board members assembling, if that could be given, versus an advisory.
We can send an email right for board graduations.
Be at 8:30.
Okay. I'll look for it.
8:30.
I'll remind everybody.
8:30, third base dugout.
That's better.
All right. We have nine players. You can field each position. We're ready to go.
Oh, you're right. All right. Very good. So, recently, I had the pleasure of watching the Rombout Middle School Music Department, or a large part of it, board five very large luxurious coaches for a trip to Massachusetts, where they competed and were adjudicated in the competition there. Of course, the big fun is that they got to go to an amusement park and ride some ferocious roller coasters. So, everybody had a pretty good time, from what I can see. And we had another meeting of the Beacon Advocates for Music. That group is coming together and should be approaching us for formal recognition at some point shortly. So, that's moving along. I wanted to say about notices of meetings, I have some concerns. The May 16th meeting was changed. It was going to be just the 9:15 canvassing of the vote meeting, so it had to be changed because we had some dealings with our attorney who wanted to brief us on things, so a meeting was moved up and made in executive session, so we could deal with that. I think that in cases where we do that, we should establish a protocol for checking to make sure everybody has actually received that notice. Email doesn't always do it for me, because sometimes I get busy, like everybody does. Perhaps there could be a point at which a double check is made with a phone call, just to be sure that everybody's on the same page. That also put me in mind of whether or not we are giving proper notice to the news media when we change our meeting times. The open meetings law is specific on that point. Then there was a meeting of the Facilities and Operations Committee that suddenly disappeared. And I noticed that when I read the board emails and I saw that Mr. Rakowski had queried Mrs. Cordaroni about what happened to his meeting. And apparently, there wasn't a conversation between the two of them prior to that decision. So, could you address that, please?
That was discussed at a board meeting, that we were looking for an alternative date to have one prior to tonight. It was an official meeting, and we were looking to advertise it, correct? But it couldn't happen, because you wanted to make sure that you had some information prior to meeting, correct? So, it was never official meeting that was set, and then it was... we talked about the board coming up with a date.
I thought it was an official meeting. It's on our calendars.
From the board meeting that we discussed, we discussed possible dates for a Facility and Operations Committee meeting. It was not set prior to that board meeting, having that discussion.
We could've talked about it tonight. It was gonna be on the 30th, on the Tuesday.
Right, we talked about it here, but we also need to communicate it to Kelly, because Kelly's the one that does... and I'm gonna comment that Kelly does a great job of the open meetings law, so I don't... you know, if there's a change, or if there's a meeting, she makes sure. And if for some reason it is not done correctly, we will not have the meeting, because we are not gonna get into the point, and that's why some of it happened. So, we had that conversation at the board level. Kelly was not here. We need, you know, we need to be... I think the chair of the committee needs to also follow up with Kelly in an email to make sure if that's exactly how the committee is going forward. We need to do that, because Kelly really does need to advertise it. The email that I sent to you today is what I sent in the meeting, is that we are, you know, I'm out of the... I'm out every night this week, and, you know, I don't think that Facilities and Operations is... that it's not important, but I think that being in the schools for the student activities is something that my role as interim superintendent, I need to be there. So, I understand Terry and I met already to come up with some suggestions. I can put it in an email. And I've also reached out to our financial advisors to get a timeline, because I think we may have a little bit of flexibility as far as when we can go out. We're hoping to have a December 5th vote, so we're gonna start working backwards from that. Okay? So, I don't think that we're lost if we didn't have the meeting. We do have a regular scheduled meeting next week. That was posted, and that's already happening. Okay.
So, to reiterate, we discussed having a meeting on the 30th, but it wasn't communicated properly within ourselves, so it wasn't ever actually...
It was never really created and posted.
Never really created and posted. And I'm looking to say, "Okay, what time do I have to be at the meeting?" I didn't see it on the calendar.
So, we need to figure that out.
So, that's where I then asked...
I think that typically, if Kelly's at the meeting, she takes it down and she would put it on. I think the extending rate of circumstances was Kelly wasn't here and it didn't communicate.
But I know that the other chair... we have to be careful, the chairperson of the committee needs to be able to speak to Kelly. You know, so if we have policy changes, we reach out to Georgia, and if it's, you know, diversity, we reach out to Anthony, or Anthony reaches out to Kelly. So, I think that's a good practice, since we have a lot of committee meetings.
So, how far in advance do we need... you know, not to belabor this, but just so I'm absolutely clear, how far in advance do we need to...
Typically, 72 hours before the meeting.
Okay.
That's protocol. There are extending rate of circumstances where I think it could be 24 hours. Is that correct, Kelly?
It's a special...
A special board meeting.
Notice is to be given as soon as practicable.
Right. So, like, you brought up about the canvas of the votes. That was a special board meeting that was added on, so that needed at least 24-hour notice, which was given.
Oh, you mean for the canvas of the votes?
The special board meeting prior to the canvassing of the votes. Correct.
The 7:30 meeting.
Correct. So, that was... there was one 24-hours notice for that.
What he said means that we utilize what's...
I didn't catch it.
Yeah, he said we sent the email, so we probably should've just followed it with a phone call, which is something that was... It's not a problem. He sent a text message. So, just say, like, did you make the email? Because sometimes people aren't looking at the email.
We've had very good board attendance, and I'm sure we all want to keep it that way, so...
I wasn't there that night, so I couldn't make it. I know I couldn't, so...
All right. Anthony?
So, I attended the City Beacon Memorial Day ceremony on May 29th, 11 o'clock, or whatever, PFW. And I also attended the Beacon Players Awards. That was on Friday, June 2nd. And I do regret missing the band meeting on April 30th, on May 30th, sorry. This year, the senior awards program will be held on Thursday, June 8th, at 6:30 p.m. in the high school theater. So, I think it's also another event that you can attend. The Beacon... the school district's Diversity Committee is scheduled to meet on Monday, June 12th, at 8:15 p.m. at the Downsas Conference Room at the Administration Building at 10 Education Drive. I did invite Shannon Wong and Jerry Womack, who will talk about the review of conduct, the Code of Conduct, and provide some policy... they're not gonna provide policy analysis right then and there, but they're gonna talk about what the analysis is, as well as some statistical info about the district that they have, and in other areas, as well as some talking points. And I believe, Cicilia, you said you were also gonna try to crunch the numbers as well for that meeting too, right?
What date is that again? I'm sorry.
12. Monday, June 12th. Yeah, sorry. I'm having problems bending phones.
You can put the mic closer.
Probably a lot to drive.
Okay, that's all I have. Great. Bill?
I attended the Duchess County School Board Association meeting last Thursday. Our guest speaker was Stuszczynski, who is an executive vice president for Hudson Valley Patents for Progress, which is an organization that looks at economic issues and development issues within Hudson Valley. He also is the former editor of the Bucy Journal. He was talking about the effective use of social media, since it's something that he has a lot of experience in. So, it was basically a discussion as to how school districts can use social media, as well as be aware of the pitfalls of social media. So, it was a good conversation, and, you know, we scratched things that we should have policies on the use of social media and the rules of social media, both for the employees within the district, as well as students while... you know? And we talked about things such as, you know, what happens if there's bullying going on through social media, as well as, you know, how the district can sell themselves over social media.
Was there, like, a presentation?
No, it was more just a discussion.
Thank you, Bill. Meredith?
I just wanted to say there... yeah, there's a ton going on in the district right now.
I just wanted to say there, yeah, there's a ton going on in the district right now, and so much good stuff. I went to the opening at DIA for the second graders and the middle schoolers, which is such an amazing program. I don't know how many years DIA has done that now. The middle school is a little bit newer, but the second grade program has been around for at least a decade, I think, now. And that was really great. National Junior Honor Society induction was lovely. Shannon actually cried, which I was really, I don't want to call anybody out, but, I'm sorry, Mrs. Caredis, because, but, you know, it was great to see her so moved by losing her eighth grader to be so touched to her students. And I think my fifth grader has almost recovered from two sleepless nights at Shark. And my husband, I'll, I'll keep you posted.
Maybe he's never recovered.
But that is such an amazing program, and it, it just reminds me of the, you know, the potential, the opportunities we can give our kids, and that we should use it as a model for what we do for our eighth graders and our seniors, because they, they just get to experience each other on such a different level, by spending the night and eating and all the team building that happens there, it's really amazing. I had a couple of questions. Did we, Emery, did we finish?
I don't know, I'm trying to listen.
Are we, did, did we solve the art issue for eighth graders, like, is that going to happen, the earlier class?
We talked to, we talked to Mr. Solzner, so, actually, we have staffing meetings tomorrow with one secondary and one elementary. So, I'll have more information. Right, we need to, to do that. We need to do staffing in general.
Okay. And then I had two other questions. One is about the calendar, we had received a letter about, you know, someone wanting the calendar, and I just, I, I've also, it's kind of, it's actually, I don't know how other board members feel, but it's, it's probably the most popular supermarket conversation, like, where is my calendar? How do I get a paper calendar? And I, I wonder, how much money do we save on that? And if there would be a way for people to request, you know, to print maybe a smaller number, because maybe not everyone would request it, but to make something available, because it, it does sort of draw a line for people that don't have internet access at home. So, I'm just wondering about that.
Okay.
And then my last question actually was for you, Anthony, about the diversity meeting. I can't make it to that, but are you within inviting the NYCLU people, are, are you, the plan is then to make a date where we can have kind of a larger program that is, you know, we really try to get the public to, and?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, at the last board meeting, we talked about the school to prison pipeline, and the board had suggested to have the folks who are Shannon Wong from the NYCLU and Jerry Womack from the End of the Jungle Network, to come to the diversity committee meeting. So, I would anticipate that once they come to the diversity committee meeting, that I fulfill the board's request, and then the board can put something on the calendar for the, for the, for the presentation proper, for, for a public, for a community event.
So, I, I, did you feel that, because I guess what I thought we came to as a board was that, yes, please go get more information. But I don't know, it's great that if they're willing to come and talk to you guys in person about what they would do, it seems like an extra step, but.
So, what I thought was going to happen is that after the budget passed, or, you know, do what it did, then the city chairman was going to give us the numbers that they had, because they could focus on that, and then we could start applying it to what we already came up with. And then what they were going to do would be later on, so that we could try to bring a conclusion to a new beginning, because I think we're just so.
There is a little bit of overlap. I mean, yeah, the numbers are going to help with the, the project that we worked out with the report card. But there's, there's definitely an overlap between the report card, some of the, some of the elements of the report card, and some of the elements of the school to prison pipeline presentation. So, I think they can go in tandem, I'm not sure they can, I mean, they can choose one or the other. But at the last board meeting, I had, I had asked, we were discussing about bringing that into the community here, the back presentation. And the suggestion from the board was to have them come to the diversity committee, so that's exactly what they're doing. But I do, I still would like to, to have a sponsor, a community day event, or, you know, present a night where they would come in and give their presentation formally to the community at large.
Yeah, hopefully, it could be sort of like the parent nights, Karen, Callie has helped us represent here, where it really, I mean, do they do a present, do they do anything to, for students, or is it just, because you'll find out.
I think they dissect the data, and they tell us exactly where our vulnerability is, and we know where we lie on the spectrum, like, there's this hole. But I think you need the, you need the foundation, so you need the data that we have, because they're going to look at that data, and, and they've already looked at that data, so they know how to really go through it without, you know what I'm saying? We're like fresh minds looking at it. They're, they're experienced in it, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think more will come from the meeting on next Monday, on the specifics of that. I know the, the presentation that was given, the event that was given in Poughkeepsie early this year was a four-panel speaker presentation, and one of them was the numbers physics, as well as a discussion of topics of how to deal with the numbers, and then there was also, like, the, the Code of Conduct, as well as others. So, I think we'll get a little more on Monday, but I think the, the goal is to have the school district sponsor a community night for that. I mean, unless the board is telling me no, we're going to continue this path.
I think, I'm very, personally, very excited about it. It's great.
Yeah.
Okay. Emery, one more?
Yes, I have one.
Just before you go to bed, so just, like I said, if you have specific questions that you want to ask, as you're not there, just type them out, and I'll be more than happy to present them, and then write back the feedback, so this is where you have it.
I don't, I actually don't, because I haven't seen the data or anything, so I've, I look forward to your report. Thank you. And I apologize that I can't be there. The last thing I wanted to mention is that we, Anthony had asked me as sort of like the, the end of the search committee team, to reach out and talk to a couple of people about welcoming Matt and how we're going to do that. And through that conversation, we, I ended up speaking to Peggy Ross and, and folks at DIA, and they're very excited to host a little thing for board members and city council members, and the mayor, and other city officials, where we can all get together and maybe even do a small tour of DIA in the fall. The other thing we talked about is doing a large potluck at the high school, that would be, you know, anyone, all families, teachers invited, and, you know, help break bread together that way. In those conversations, I had spoken to Lorraine Hextall, who also wanted to touch base with Matt, and I made an email introduction for them. They started this conversation that, we had also kind of talked about, about having, extending this to these, what we're calling, community conversations. Matt, you can feel, feel free to jump in. But, so we are kind of taking, starting with a list that really came from the search firm, the, the different groups that we had talked about reaching out to for the interview process, and hosting community conversations at various places around Beacon, so that we're not asking people to come to us, we're going to them. So, that, we've started that, but obviously, and everyone knows what that list was, but we can, you know, we can send it out again, so everyone sees what it is, but that's, I know there were some questions earlier about that.
Sounds good. Kristen?
So, June eighth, four PM, Lawness Committee meeting.
I think you start out with that now.
I know, I feel like I'm finally getting it. Like, I feel like I've stepped up, guys. I really, I paid attention, and I came prepared very excited.
That was the positive enforcement right there.
Yeah, it was, thank you, I'll keep going. So, I want, I want to thank Cecilia for putting together the Teal's Grant application, and I want to thank Alana Reynolds, who's in the audience tonight, who is pretty instrumental. Did you bring this to our attention, Alana, or did you?
Yeah, through the town.
So, thank you. That's, yeah. Many conversations over the dollar rack at the natural market.
I want to thank, I want to thank everyone that actually pushed it through and made it happen next semester. I mean, that's pretty awesome, I'm really, really happy about that.
Yeah, again, thank you, guys, who did all the hard work, the labor, help it. And to that point, into our board goals, I think this is a great dry run for something, da-da-da-da, a press release, let's get this out there. We're the only school that, north of the city, that has won this grant, where it's introducing computer science. I certainly will help put together a press release, if anybody's interested in me helping with that, I can get first draft together. This would be a lot easier than somebody finding an obscure link on a website that they may never go to. There is IBM, and plenty of retired IBMers right in the Poughkeepsie, greater Hudson Valley area, who might, you know, be really bored one day and read a paper, and suddenly feel like they have a renewed base on life, because they can come and be a community partner. I'm actually being totally serious, I'm sorry, but I, I think that that, we need to get the word out, this is something really cool, and it's, it's really, it's a great way to put a spotlight on the hard work that's been done by our administration, that we are partnering with this great organization, that there's an opportunity to work with the community. I mean, this has got it all, so I think we should definitely move forward with that. And to build on that a little bit, the, I've been, I've still been talking to the Plaid Institute or MEGA Institute about the Sustainable Schools Initiative and the, the August workshop that they're putting together. They're kind of hammering out the details, they're still very interested in working with Beacon. I did ask them to wait until we had a new director of facilities. And we can start putting together a team for that, because I think this is, Beacon's in this very interesting place, where we have this great program now that we're working with the Beacon Institute, we're adopting this tributary to the Hudson, as it relates to doing research, and hopefully, building more of a relationship with them. We're also, as a community, in this rapid development phase, which has a huge impact on waterways, and there's a lot of opportunities to really both learn and grow and plan for us and work with community partners. So, I think as soon as we can start to pull this team together, that would be great. And I have to also just dispute your point about the paper calendar. First of all, I really loved the scanned-in handwritten note. I mean, it made me, that's the first thing I've ever received, like, that looks like something that I know somebody I'm related to would write, like, "I voted for you, and I want to see this." And I can relate to that. I would love to see if we could do something about a paper calendar. If not, if we could do a very easy-to-understand printable PDF version in the short term, and then move towards a paper calendar. It is the thing that I do feel like we all hear the most about, and it seems like pretty low-hanging fruit to, to please people. And that's it.
Mike?
June fourteenth, seven-thirty PM. That's the next Facility and Operations Committee meeting. We had the prior discussion about, you know, potentially having an earlier meeting, but we'll stick with the, the June fourteenth, seven-thirty PM. So, we were, we were going to, I talked for a number of meetings about going through the proposed capital plan during this meeting, but we still have a little bit more work to do. We want to make sure that we take the time, you know, to be as thorough as possible. So, we're going to discuss it again on the, on the fourteenth, and then we'll decide which meeting that we'll be bringing it back, correct? I attended the spring athletic awards meeting that was last Wednesday, and it was very impressive. All the, all the, the spring teams were designated as scholar athletic teams, if I'm saying that properly. That's impressive, so all, all the teams. You know, time and time again, we know that sports, participating in sports, you know, leads to, you know, higher achievement and a lot of, you know, good results, so I'm really hoping that our, our new director, when we finally, when we find one, will, you know, will bring this, and bring a plan, and put a plan together to get more and more kids involved in sports, because we have great programs, a lot of dedicated teachers, you know, as, as, as the, the coaches, and really, the more, the more we can get on the teams, the more benefit I think we'll have. Also, so a lot, there's a lot of seventh and eighth graders, actually, that were on these teams. So, a lot of the teams, most of them seem pretty young, so we should have a couple of years of really good, good performance. And, let me see, to that. Oh, I wanted to ask a question, kind of similar to what I heard before about Forestville. We talked about an enrollment study that was going on. What is the status of that?
Enrollment stu, we have to gather some information, so we're in the process of doing that. To be honest with you, right now, we're doing, our focus is on staffing. We need to meet with the elementary and secondary principals, the teachers need their letters of their assignment by the June fifteenth, so that's the priority at the moment. But the assess, the enrollment study can be done over the summer, and they need a lot of demographic information that we need to pull from the computer. So, we have the coaster set up, it's with Eastern Substate BOSIS, so we've already signed up for that. So, we'll be in the process of sending that out, hopefully, by the end of this month, when school comes to a close, and then have it done over the summer, so it'll be ready. So, just, just as an aside, we had that extra elementary position in the budget, which wasn't really assigned to anywhere, because we're going to look at all of the schools. So, I didn't say that before, but the, the money's there for a teacher, it's just where that teacher needs to be, and so we didn't forget about Forestville, even though I didn't mention it in the budget presentation, so.
So, even though we don't have the enrollment study, you'll be looking at the enrollment, the actual enrollment?
Well, the actual enrollment would be.
And have to make some adjustments.
Exactly, so we have to move everybody up a grade. We also know that, you know, if people are coming in, they've already registered, we want to make sure we leave a little buffer for those that are coming, either from a Montessori school or from a private propio school.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
Turgut?
I'm done. Okay.
All right, so first, I'd like to congratulate everyone who participated in the career fair. I heard it was very successful, I heard there was a lot of representation from trades, a lot of interest from the students here, so kudos to everyone who did that. I also attended the athletic awards, and I really want to congratulate the students and the coaches, who put in a lot of time and effort to make sure that the students stay on top of things, and, you know, that they're successful. I think they still would like some, some feelings, too. So, I'm just making it happen. You can make that happen, right?
Continuously improve our, our facilities.
And also, on May thirty-first, I attended our Career and Technical Institute at BOSIS. They had a induction for the National Technical Honor Society, so I just wanted to read out some of the students that were inducted, which was Kendu Breen, who's in graphic arts, Jade Herring, graphic arts, Jared Panko, security and law enforcement, Michael Patchen, security and law enforcement, and Reina Thompson for culinary arts. So, I want to congratulate them. I just also want to, you know, remind people that although they are attending the Career and Technical Center for, for part of their day, their junior and senior year, and just, you know, in regards to other students that may be doing other things, they're still our students, so I want us to remember that when we're planning events, that we should look at, you know, make sure there's nothing kind of, any conflicts going on there. I know that I've been a thorn in people's side for a couple of weeks now, so.
Remind yourself.
So, I just want to make sure that, I, I mean no harm, I just, you know, want to see that everyone gets included, and I think that goes back to something Kenya and I talked about at the beginning of the year, is not only, you know, not only representing students who do well academically, it's work, but we have so many students who just really, who really try, and I think everybody should, you know, receive some kind of acknowledgement of their efforts. Well, so, the Policy Committee meeting will be on June twelfth, at seven PM, and that's prior to diversity, I believe. I think that's it.
Kenny?
I just wanted to ask that we have a conversation about the after-school programs at the next meeting, Anthony, if that's possible.
Sure, is there anything in particular that you want to discuss about them, or what are you looking for?
Just want to know how the student's attendance is tracked, and if there are any programs that are not being utilized. So, it doesn't matter if there's one student attending, and that's sufficient, and they like it, but just to assess whether or not the programs that currently exist are being utilized by the students and, you know, seeing where. Clubs, clubs, clubs.
So, Emery, do you think that you could get that from the club supervisors for the next board meeting?
I can talk to Dr. Seabring and, and Mr. Solzner.
I can talk to Dr. C. Relling and Dr. Soft.
There's a police academy and a fire academy that is free to 9th to 12th graders. The registration ends on June 15th. There's limited seating. The program is free. My son participated in the program, and I want to tell you he had an interest in law enforcement. They, they really did a really good job. Joe Galbo in guiding those students. The program grew last year. Fire was in its first year, and as it grows, you know, it's definitely something that if students have the interest and they're not doing anything for the summer, here's another opportunity to keep students engaged. So, the paperwork is on the website. I think the Beacon Parents page, and if you know you from Beacon, to know those particular places. The other thing I, I wanted to just discuss maybe is like the public relations. Like originally I had asked that, you know, we have that committee, and then I pulled back because, you know, the webpage was being developed, but I don't feel that the school is the main source of gathering information. And I think that as a school district, we should be the means to pump our information about what's happening in our school buildings. So, I, I would like to also just revisit the public relations, you know, portion and try to just have a conversation on what the board thinks we should do to actually make us the, the key resource for the community.
Can I ask you for, because July's coming and the board is staying the same, to put something together? And then what we could do is at the rework meeting, we could, you know, we discuss committees and so forth and who wants to be part of committees. So if you have an idea of what you want that committee to look like, we could share that. And then what we could do is we can act to, at that rework meeting to see if that's something that we want to go forth with.
So, and then I just want to ask, if anyone knows, I'm gonna stick a lot on keeping the kids actively engaged. So, I just want to make sure that Naviance is still on the, we're gonna pay, make that big payment.
It's taken care of, ready.
Oh, so they did reach out to you and everything is?
Yeah, I, yeah. At a conference call with the, the regional rep for our area with Naviance, and we talked through proposals and scaling up, and had a quick conversation with some of our guidance counselors the other day with regard to asking them to identify some times that we could begin their orientation startup training. And we're talking with, with the consultant, I asked them to put forth a proposal where some of the year-one contract could be about their consultant time, which would help be a facilitator for us in planning and implementing the logistics as well as the action plan implementation. So, more to come, but the first stages of it are the startup, but timing of the year at the school level. We're focused right now on getting the school year closed out and making sure all our students are set with end of the year and graduation. And so we, we made some decisions that we would hold on that conversation until July. But we're, it's in motion.
And then just Grow Your Own, we're finalized and we have a person that's-
With Grow Your Own, there is, as you recall, I mentioned several meetings earlier, a clinical fellow who's, who was employed by Marist College. Dr. Christina Fields, she's from the University of Indiana and has done similar programming work there, so it's an asset for Marist. She's been working very closely with Ms. Sims. I know that they can't, she, so they've been having planning conversations as well as the two of them together met with students who were involved in the program last year, and they had some focus student group conversations, which has also helped me to inform their planning. More to come in September. They're looking for a kickoff in September, and that will be inclusive of awareness sessions for students as well as families.
So, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say, so is there a way that parents-
Yes, no, absolutely will include families.
Right, because I think the parents know more kids will be involved just on the bonds.
Yeah, so that will be all part of their plan. But they're going to be doing a lot of the program planning for, over the summer, so, in July. But they, they have a kickoff timeline for mid to end of September. So early September will be about putting the word out, so that by end of September, they are getting kids signed, signed up and that they can then begin programming in October.
And then I just want to, my paper calendar, where I stood by myself in the beginning of school year, several meetings in a row. So, I'm glad that people agree that the paper calendar should be back. I understand that sometimes things aren't readily available to go on the calendar, and sometimes there's errors, but it does help for people who do not have it, and it, it does help you organize your, structure your time so that you can actually, you know, attend. So I'm glad that other people are feeling that now. I was feeling it and I just kept it to myself because I was alone.
I have a follow-up question. So, Kenya, you brought up a good point about the, the clubs, after-school clubs. But I thought at the last board meeting or so, we had talked, we talked about that as well, and I think Cecily reminded me, correct me if I'm wrong, but something about trying to do a survey or something with the students, trying to figure out what they were going to do. I thought that was going to take a little bit of time.
She put that in her.
I, I had just a clarifying question that I was gonna bring up about it. So, for the after-school discussion, right, you want to have a discussion about it, is it more of a discussion that you want to have? Or is it more information that you want from the administrators to see where we're at with it?
So, so, yeah. So I think it's twofold, because one is to determine if kids are actually attending for the, like, their for duration. So say, I don't know, we're gonna say yacht club, just, I don't name a particular club. Say yacht club runs from, you know, September to June, right? You should see pretty much the attendance throughout. If there's the, no, not us particularly. I think that this is really, again, some, some of the areas that I think we delve into is we delve into because, or I delve into because I don't really see productivity. There's a lot of kids outside doing things that if they have activities within the school building, they may have that, there may be an interest to them and they may become involved in that. So what I wanted to do is an assessment, ask the group if they are interested as well, and actually looking at what we particularly have now and see if kids are utilizing those things. If they are not utilizing them, then what would they like? Not to take away something, maybe add something on? Maybe replace things because they're outdated. Now there's Pokemon clubs or, you know, all these different kind of things that are going on. So I don't think that the clubs are as utilized as, I think they just exist, you know what I'm saying?
So, to have that, for myself to have that conversation, I would need a list of the clubs that we currently have and, and the attendance piece, and then, you know, I think that we could go from there. But I think that, that would be preliminary information needed, but I don't know if it's us that should need to make the decision or the students, you know, to know that-
I think the students-
There's viable options, like Anthony was saying about, hey, student survey to see what interests there are and so forth.
Yeah, student survey, we'll come and find community partners, you know. And, and I'd like to add to that conversation actually is, you know, maybe, I know for after-schools usually Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Maybe, you know, I'm not saying we need to expand it for Monday and Friday as well, but, you know, that could be part of the conversation too.
Can we add to the conversation just a little bit, which, because I think, I remember the last time we talked about this, one of the things Emery said was, you don't want to, you know, just because something might have small attendance, it might be, you know, a small group of students only connection to the school or only real lifeline.
Sorry, that's why I said if there's one student, we should still keep it, like, we're not gonna eliminate it, but.
I, I think that, but I was listening to what you're saying, and it sounds like it's not just the clubs though. You're saying there's, there's kids that you're noticing that are after-school, like, aren't engaged and aren't plugging in. So maybe it's about identifying what the gap is, or so that-
So I think to just have that conversation, if you guys could get us that, and then we could, then we could roll with how the conversation is.
And I don't know who does that. I don't want to overstep my boundary, you know what I mean? But when I look at it, I, I definitely see that, that there's more students on the street than in a school building, and, and they could be actively engaged in all of those activities that are offered there, like at least 22 on the page that I live within my planner, because I'm always pointing to something my son could do.
I kind of want to throw, I kind of want to throw the idea also.
We're not gonna have the discussion tonight. We're not gonna have the discussion tonight. We're, we're going on. We're gonna get the information, we'll have the discussion with the next board meeting. All right. Are you done? Okay. So, I just wanted to ask the board members about the NISBA convention, where we're at. It's, that's October 12th through the 14th to have for the next board meeting, if you're available to go, and if you're wishing to go, so we can start to get that together, so we can start planning for it. Craig, I just wanted to apologize about not calling about this special board meeting. I thought we set protocol and we've never had a issue communicating through email before, and I didn't know that you did not get it, if you didn't get it. I thought it was the common way that we were communicating, and that's the way that we've been communicating all year. I will make sure in the call, if that's what the board wants. If there's a special meeting, do you want a phone call or a text message?
I think that if somebody doesn't acknowledge, right, or if somebody doesn't acknowledge the email, like, sometimes we just, we just read it.
Well, I could tell you everybody's- I could tell you everybody's email practices and when they respond, when they don't respond, and they respond in groups and so forth. So, I mean, not a lot of people respond right after an email. They might respond at four emails on one day, that could be for the week, so they go on. Like, so I, I could pretty much tell you everybody's email practices. Mic goes on in the morning, I mean, so it's like, I could tell you, it's like- It's a new special meeting, but that wasn't communicated, so that's why there was no phone call. It was a common knowledge that I thought that we were communicating via email, so if that's something that you want different, just express it to me and I could definitely do it.
I think a good protocol would be to observe who's responded, or perhaps when we have a notice that goes by email, to ask for everybody to check in and say, "I got the memo." And if you noticed at six hours before the meeting that somebody hasn't responded, then give them a call.
That sounds like, I think we should just-
That is not my job to monitor the emails and to see when, six hours before, who didn't come. I could tell you that I have it right on my phone, but I'm not going back to look at-
Okay, wait, 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 I think that, but I think that, I think he just threw out an idea, and I think he, there's a little bit of entrapment there. As you're talking about email habits, I think for a special meeting, I think it's a good protocol. If we, we all have each other's cell phones, we can do a text thread where we just say, because I will say that I will not email back and check in if email-
I was asking for clarification that we were communicating via email.
That's a little like me.
Well, it's like, it was asked that a phone call be made, but we never had that discussion to have a phone call. And if it's something that we wanted, I'd be more than receptive to it. But to be called out for not doing something that we haven't discussed is, that's, you know, I take pride in what I do and trying to make sure that we're communicating effectively, and then to throw out there, well, it should have been a phone call where that hasn't been discussed when we had the board retreat. It does feel a little disheartening, because I do try and communicate effectively with the whole board and make sure that people get it, and that was a new practice just being thrown out there, so.
Just an idea.
I understand, and if that's what we want to do, I could definitely do-
I think a special, a special meeting, like, I think that we, we all know how to look at the agenda for scheduled meetings, but I think if there's something that deviates, that if just a text on all of our, to all of our phones-
Can do.
Yeah, that would be simple and straightforward and it's on us.
You said it. All right, um, this is the first meeting that we've had publicly, so, after the budget vote. I want to thank the public for coming out and voting and supporting and ratifying the budget with over an 80% approval, and all the propositions. Every single proposition, every single proposition, and we had four of them, were over 80% with approval rating, which is one of the highest that I've seen or remember in Beacon. So, that goes to, I think, the work of the administration putting the budget together, the, the public knowing what's going on in the district, and the public trusting the board. So, I, I want to commend the board members on what they're doing, making sure that we're being transparent and, and having candid conversations. So, that, that goes to what the work, the body of work that we're doing as well as with the district administrators, but it goes to the public coming out and voting and supporting the kids, which it's all about. So thank you to the public. This time of year, I call it the happy times for schools, because there's so much going on that you're spread so thin, and if you have more than one kid in the district, you're like out all the time. But it's always good to see the celebrations and the smiles on the kids' faces and seeing the rewards from a 10-month program, being benefited with a couple breaks. So it goes without, it's so exciting to see it, and it kind of culminates with the high school graduation and the happiness of, hey, you know, we successfully completed a 12-year program. So, enjoy these months as board members when you go to the, the, the programming or the event and, and seeing it, because it is priceless to see the kids' face, because sometimes, sitting back here, you can lose sight of it is about the kids and the interaction with the kids, because we're not in the buildings all the time with them and we see our own kids. But, you know, it's nice to see the kids of the district and, and what we're made up of and so forth. So, go to as many as you can and enjoy them. All righty.
I wanted to add one thing to that, and I do with, are you, you're done? No, according to celebration, wanted to again thank, thank Emery for getting the sign fixed. I think it's great seeing all the kids.
Actually, I'm gonna, Terry Kulisak is here and actually was responsible for getting the sign.
Take a look as you go by, because there's a lot of great, your kids doing great things, and that's, that's a final result, so very good.
So I forgot to mention, so someone, I'm sorry, someone posted on, on Facebook about two of our alumni students, and so I just wanted to share and then do exactly what they said publicly. So, Rayvon Gray represented LSU in the Long Jump and the 4x100 Relay, and David Adams represented Northeastern University 400 Hurdles. Rayvon qualified for the Nationals in the 4x100 Relay and will be, and will be in Eugene, Oregon on June 6th, which is, I think, tomorrow? Tomorrow. And David ranked number 36 overall in the East, both a freshman and represent Beacon on every sports roster and commentators' info sheets. The next time you see Jimmy Henry and Coach Ron Hammond, please thank them for a job well done for these two students who are competing in the NCAA level. So, I just say kudos to those coaches and keep going to those two students.
Good job.
All right.
I have one more thing.
I'm gonna call it the Hewitt Center, where it comes back and, you know, you have that time, and it's just, oh, wait a minute, I got one more, I got one more. So, unfinished business, we have one item on unfinished business. About two board meetings ago, I think it was, there, Kelly gave us a sheet, and they are on board docs for either Monday or Tuesday meeting, because there were some public community members that were expressing wanting to be part of the city council meetings that are on Monday, and then there were some board comments and, and board members that, you know, thought that if we could do a, an alternate day. So Kelly put together for the 2017-18 Board Meeting Draft, possible board meeting dates for mainly Tuesdays with the exception of the rework meeting on July 5th, and that's the only non-Tuesday meeting. And then the other one was a Monday meeting, which is our current practice, and that still had a Wednesday meeting of July 5th, with the budget meeting being Tuesday, August 24th, and Tuesday, May 15th for the Canvas of the Votes meeting. We, I didn't want it open-ended, I wanted to kind of see where we're going, so we could give Kelly some direction, so we could let people know what we're doing. Are we gonna continue with Monday meetings? Can we do Tuesday meetings?
And make a motion and then-
I, it's a discussion right now. It's unfinished business. We have it on the agenda, so we can have the discussion. We don't need to make a motion, but if we're gonna take action to, to adopt one or the other, we would then need a motion too.
So, I'm just- I, I, yeah, I mean, I was running through the list and I haven't finished, but I, you know, switching everything to Tuesday, I guess, is, is, is the quickest way, I guess, to include the city Beacon, but there's other, I mean, there's other things that happen on Tuesday in terms of city Beacon. The planning board meetings are on, and there's a lot of construction going on right now in Beacon that happens on Tuesdays. The town boards, the town officials, which is also part of our district, have their meetings on Wednesdays, you know, and then there's Thursdays. So, I was also, I was also gonna mention that city council, they don't have all their, not 100%, most of the meetings are Monday, and not all of them are, because they do celebrate more holidays than we do. So, you know, you may also be missing some meetings if you don't carefully look at which meetings they're gonna have on Tuesdays.
I think it's looking, and the way I look at this is I know that we're not gonna have no conflicts with any city events. I was hearing that there's workshops every other Monday and then city council meetings every other Monday, and it was a discussion, and I know that some community members came up and spoke about trying to go to that first and then coming over here, because we tended to run later and stuff. So I just wanted to make sure that we're giving Kelly the right direction as- So, I just wanted to make sure that we're giving Kelly the right direction as to which way we want to go as a board.
I mean, personally, I would prefer to stick with the Monday schedule, because I've been traveling quite a bit for work, so it's easier to leave, like, on our next meeting, I'll be leaving, you know, Tuesday morning to head out. Um, where I'll probably miss a lot more if there are meetings, if they're on Tuesdays versus Mondays. So, I mean, if we wanted to move to a Tuesday, I would at least request maybe this, you know, lay out two years, so then the new candidates that are even coming and running for the board know that the calendar is gonna be shifting to a Tuesday, you know? Like, Monday for this year and then Tuesdays thereafter, something like that, if we really want to change, that would be my preference.
I think, so, I, when I first brought this up, um, I, I asked, and I'll ask again, that we, um, pull ourselves out of this conversation and just look at it, um, you know, from a, with an objective point of view, as to whether or not we're making it, um, as easy as possible for community members to participate. I mean, there is also the, the element of board members participating, and we do, Anthony has a good point that the planning board meetings are on Tuesdays, and so that would become a new conflict, and I think, uh, in many ways, the development is, uh, is the biggest thing that I would like to see the city and the, um, school district partner on or at least communicate about. But, um, I haven't figured out if the planning board is the best place to address that. I'm, I've been trying to look at, you know, where the, where the voting happens and where, what the kind of, um, end of the line is there, or, or beginning. I, I really, it's a little bit of a confusing system that I haven't paid a ton of attention to. But, um, but I understand everyone's schedule, and I think, Mike, that, to me, that would be fine to decide, you know, yeah, let's not do this right now, because everyone who ran was planning on Monday nights. But I would really like to have the discussion outside of everyone's personal schedules for a second and just ask ourselves, you know, is this what serves us the best? And at the very least, I think it would be good to make sure our meetings are on the nights where, um, it's, it's the workshops that you cannot speak at, right?
Yes, the workshops you cannot speak at.
So, the, you know, the city council meetings where you wouldn't be able to publicly participate anyway, and so, so at least, you know, at least to give a nod to the fact that we're trying to let people, um, participate in votes if they want to.
So, something like the first and third Monday or something, I mean, because we're, we're being asked to change versus asking the city council to like kind of accommodate as well.
Well, we're recognizing.
No one from them asked them officially, no one from the city has asked us officially to change. We were just listening to some public members, and then I know that board members were saying it would be nice, because they're involved and that they want to be involved in the city events as well as the, the board events. Bill, can I ask a historical question? Has this ever been discussed, like?
No, not really, it's always, always been, uh, Mondays, typically the second and fourth Mondays.
It's never come up?
No, never really.
And city council has always been on Monday as well?
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it's in their charter or something, I can't remember.
So, looking at the Monday schedule here, it looks like we're the, what, second and fourth Monday?
Yeah, so, so the both days in July conflict, not both days, I'm sorry, July seventeenth conflicts with the, with the third Monday, uh, August seventh conflicts with the first Monday, um, and then, and then there's no conflict until, um, uh, November sixth, which is the first Monday, and then November twentieth is the second, is the third Monday. Um, and then, um, you know, I can keep going, but that's kind of where I was trying to do, I was trying to do analysis as to which ones hit, s- s- planned city council meetings, um, and try to avoid those dates.
And they start at seven as well?
They start at seven as well, yes.
The, the only problem, I'm just gonna say out loud, the summer meetings are a little bit difficult, and we, we're strategic about when they are. And you'll notice that we only have one meeting in July, we have two in August. That twenty-eighth meeting's important, because we do get people who resign or are trying to fill a position. I mean, you know, we, we're much farther ahead than we've been in the past, but there's always that exception, and we need to open school the week after. Um, so it, that's, that's the hard part. Um, and the other parts, like November sixth, you run into Thanksgiving and the holidays, so it's, as a rule of thumb, we're second and fourth, but there's gonna be some exceptions, that's what you're seeing there. So, I just wanted to bring that up, so it's not gonna be perfect, but if we keep with the second and fourth, you'll probably be able to make most of the city council meetings, if you want.
You mean, keep, keep avoiding second and fourth?
No, we are second and fourth.
Second.
We are second and fourth.
Yes.
Except for some circumstances beyond our control, we are second and fourth. Summer is a different issue.
So, November, we're hitting the first and the third because of Thanksgiving, you're saying, right?
Right. So, there are exceptions that, um.
I mean, can we shift those to Tuesday in November?
Then we're kind of all over the place.
I would defer not to have, uh, if it's gonna pick a day of the week and, and keep the day of the week.
I mean, one of the things I think happens too is that, uh, a lot of the schools and everything, they know that Mondays are sort of our day, so, I mean, sometimes I don't think you'll see, you know, I mean, that's when we have our committee meetings typically, it's also when we have our board meetings. So, I think a lot of times, schools try and avoid, um, having some events on a Monday, so that the, you know, because they, they might have to come here, as well as we want to attend their events as well, so.
Actually, Bill, Bill reminds me of a good point, you, you know, we're, actually, I, I kind of disagree about the committee meetings. Um, we're, we're trying to schedule these meetings so we can attend city council, but then we schedule the committee meetings on Mondays as well, so then we can't attend city council.
But those meetings get hung up.
So, so, yeah, I mean, I, I would like to avoid committee men, committee meetings on Monday, um, if we want to keep working on Mondays.
We don't have to have a committee meeting on Monday.
Yeah, no, I know that.
Sometimes it's just, that's just how it works out with everybody's schedule.
Typically, we all have Mondays free.
When we ask people what nights they're available.
So, I'm hearing, Kelly, would it be possible to look out for the eighteen nineteenth school year and do this to see Tuesdays and share with us Tuesdays for the eighteen nineteenth school year? I know we don't have the start date or the end date, but we're city schools, so we typically have the summer meetings and, and, you know, the first week of July, and then we usually go from that, and we know that we can adjust it, but just to look to give us the idea. I like the idea that Mike had, to see if we could do a phase in over two years, and then the building principals would know that, hey, you know what? Tuesday is gonna be the new Monday, and so, school should be on.
I agree with Mike, I think it's, if you're gonna switch, I think it's something that you don't want to just do it, you know, so quickly, because, you know, because a lot of people have planned already or anticipate that Mondays are our night, and, and, you know, having more money means people can plan accordingly.
It doesn't have to be at the next board meeting, Kelly, but if you could just see if that could be put together.
Can I throw a curveball, just talking about, um, uh, building principal mentioned, this was before I was on the board, but, uh, last year about, um, and it would, this could happen maybe once a quarter or twice a year, um, moving a meeting earlier so that, um, younger students could come to a meeting and participate.
But we are gonna have a student board member next year too, so that's a great point.
Yeah, just to, um, you know, because it, it, even still, even with the elementary kids, even eight, it's kind of late to make them to sit here. And I, I think that, um, if our focus is on, um, you know, trying to bring more awareness and, and to who we're serving and the students, it would be great to have the opportunity to have them come, more students come.
I mean, an alternate to that would just be to shift public, uh, the executive session later.
Have it just at the end.
Have it at the end, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, I, I think that I just would like to look at the idea of even, just, because with the younger kids, you're hitting like dinnertime and, you know, and, you know.
But you don't want to do it too early, because then if the student board member plays sports, then they can't make it, because they play sports, so, and, and there's always a catch.
Yeah.
There's always a catch or something.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, yeah, or, or maybe we can schedule the occasional special board meeting for, to focus on, you know, younger kids or something like that.
I agree.
Uh, and then one more thing about that, which is, I don't, I, I feel like, so we had this discussion of a Tuesday and a versus a Monday, and I agree with where it's landed, because I don't think it's fair to switch, but I don't want to lose the focus or the intention of the goal, which is developing more of a relationship with the city, having more dialogue, and, um, and linking these two institutions to one another, between the city government and the, um, and the school board. So, um, maybe there's a more informal way to, to address this, whether it's, um, a couple of board members representing and, you know, with, uh, a few city, city council members and just being available to the public occasionally for dialogue, or some, some informal ways that don't have to do with open meetings law, but increasing dialogue and also, um, you know, sort of creating links to the other, to the city council and the issues that they're dealing with.
So, do you have a suggestion to?
I had suggested a meeting, I think we only did the, the cupcakes one time, and then I said we should do it three times a year, so that the community gets to meet us outside of this, you know, formal environment, and we get to engage more in the community, and that kind of got, it got lost. But my concept is, is that students need to get to know us, parents need to get to know us, they need to know who we are individually, um, and then what we believe in collectively or whatever that is, because I think that speaks to the community when we're up here. We agree or we disagree, we state our opinions, but they don't know who we are outside of here, so I did suggest that last year.
Well, I think that's a good idea for community relations, I think that's, that's a good idea, but I think also just, I mean, for me, I can say, the way this works is I run up to Peggy Rosson Street, or I go to Dogwood and McCordar joins George Mansfield, or I harass Randy near Mr. Beast, like, those things are not the like, I mean, we need to format. I think it's leading to a lot of like backroom conversations. Exactly. And I, I, I think we need to steer ourselves away from that, so I, I don't know if there would be like a liaison committee, um, that would be in touch with city council. I guess we know we're free the other nights, because we are meeting on the same night, but, um, that, that is part of my concern, is that we do need to be talking to the city and, um, and there's, since there's no formal way to do it right now, if, you know, I see Randy at the gym, six AM most mornings, and talk to him out there, that's not, I, I don't think that's should be our goal, but, you know.
It sounds like you're talking about a retreat between us and them.
A little bit of regular, I think regular communication is, is important right now.
Well, the, this, the sustainability thing was that.
This is a count, I just want to kind of frame it for a little time, this is about the calendar.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's.
I think we're, I, it sounds like we're all agreeing that for now, Monday.
Kelly, I had a question about Mondays. So, so Mar, so, um, I guess November was explained, and summer was explained, why we have them in conflict with this city schedule. March, uh, fifth and nineteenth, um, they're also the first and third Mondays.
Twelve and nineteenth.
Twelve and nineteenth.
I'm sorry.
Spring break is in there, we have an early spring break this year.
Oh, okay, so.
Just nineteenth to sixth.
Yeah, I'm sorry, um, um, May fifth, May seventh, I'm sorry, May seventh, two thousand and eighteen, that's also first Monday.
May seventh is the budget hearing, so it has to be that week before you have the budget vote, so we, we don't, our hands are tied there.
June fourth and June eighteenth.
So, June eighteenth is probably, I'm just saying, the last week of school, so you're not gonna want to have a board meeting that following week if we don't have school, it's probably.
It's on the list, yeah, it's on the list, so.
No, I, what I'm saying is you want to have it the eighteenth, you don't want to have it the week after, because school is closed, it's after graduation.
All right, well, those are the conflicts that I saw between, uh, Monday meetings and the city council meetings.
They were all with purpose, basically, what we're hearing.
I would also like to consider, I did this years ago, having the board meetings at different schools.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
Having the presentation, I really hope that George can do those. So, something if you laid it out for the year, you know, once in a while, we'll go to a different place, maybe consider that.
I'd second that.
Okay. So, signal the Monday schedule.
So, is this the calendar, those are the dates that you would adopt?
Those are the dates that we could, correct for the next board meeting, next board meeting for the, so people. Sounds good, all right.
So, you need a motion to accept it, or you just want to?
We're gonna put it on the agenda and put it on the consent agenda for the next meeting. Okay. We might as well say it now. Consent agenda, the use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of the plan by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on a consent agenda may so indicate, and the item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of, of the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. I would like to fold on point oh nine.
Eleven oh two. Eleven point oh seven.
All right. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda excluding eleven point oh two, eleven point oh seven, and eleven point oh nine. Is there a second?
Second.
Georgia, can you second, comments and questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried now.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to introduce, um, ready, Anthony? Kind of got lost in the shuffle, I'd like to introduce Anthony D'Amato, who, um, we have just appointed as our new director of facilities. He will begin, um, in the district in the beginning of July, um, Henry's, um, retirement's effective then. Terry will be on a flight back to Texas, or in a car driving on the way to Texas on that time. So, um, we're happy that, um, Anthony is gonna join us the beginning of July.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome.
And thanks to Terry for.
Yeah, thanks to Terry, yeah.
Coming up during the winter season.
Terry, I hope you fill a minute out the facility and operation.
Yeah, facility's an operation committee, we'll, we'll, we'll find.
We're safe together. He's not going anyplace, he's inside out.
All right, I need a motion for eleven point oh nine.
Motion to accept donations as listed.
I need a second. Comments, questions? I'd just like to say, uh, thank you for all the donations, this is a considerable, a considerable amount of money that is donated on this board meeting, and I just wanted to make sure, uh, I was trying not to pull donations as much out as then, but I was looking at this and I was like, this is a, like, a lot of money. So, thank you to everybody that's donating, and I do appreciate it.
I, I want to particularly, um, call on the anonymous donation for five hundred dollars for the school lunch debt, I think that's really heartwarming.
Yeah, there's, there's more to come. So, just so you know.
Yeah, that's really nice.
Awesome, so thank you to everybody, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried now. I need a motion for eleven point oh two.
So.
Craig, a second? Meredith, comments and questions?
Yeah, I think the minutes should reflect that we had a recess, uh, after the executive session and before we reconvened for the canvassing of the votes, isn't that accurate? The canvassing of the vote meeting?
I wasn't here for the first part of the session.
I was gonna say that we should have the recess.
We have the first session.
The minutes don't reflect a recess.
We did take a recess, as I recall, we, uh, had the executive session, and then we took a long break while we waited for the, the votes to be certified and so on.
Was there a motion made to have a recess?
I don't recall if there was a motion, we may have simply done it on your call or something like that.
No, he wasn't here.
I wasn't here.
So, we, we left executive session at nine ten when I went to the gym, so I, I assumed then that you guys came out to public as I went out.
We were just waiting.
Yeah, but we were sitting here quietly.
Wasn't, I mean, I don't know if it would be considered a recess or just kind of a waiting.
There was nothing formally done.
Nothing was formally.
So, it kind of.
So, then you can't acknowledge it in the.
Okay.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried now. Eleven point oh seven, okay, motion to approve, eleven point oh seven, approve claims, auditors, reports. Second?
Second.
Georgia, comments, questions?
Um, I had a question on, okay, claims audit report, uh, May twenty-third, twenty seventeen, on page, uh, three, well, three in the PDF, there's check number two five five two zero, and this was Arlington School, Central School District, uh, check amount for fourteen thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
That, um, that was a reimbursement for, um, our, one of our special ed students that goes to private parochial. So, Arlington, because it's in the Arlington School District, they provide the service and then they backbill us, so we need to pay.
We pay them, okay, and that's how we pay them, okay. And, and I.
I had another question on that.
Okay.
It was, uh, check number two five five three four of the same page, Dell Marketing LP, you know, Dell Marketing LP, thirty-two thousand six ninety.
That was part of the, um, the cart, there was a portion that we had to do directly with Dell, and there was a portion that was gonna go through Dutch's BOSI. So, I, that I, I can get you specifics and email the board.
That was for that card?
Yeah, it's for getting the cards here, so there was a portion that was better for us to go through Dell and to go through BOSI's.
All right, good, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried now. So we have, um, we added to the agenda during the review of the agenda, uh, motion twelve point oh one, which is an addendum. So the first addendum item twelve point oh one will be resolution zero six zero five one seven A. Can anyone read it?
Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the memorandum of agreement between the Beacon City School District and the Beacon Teachers Association, extending the parties' collective bargaining agreement that expired on June thirtieth, twenty seventeen for four years through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
So can you, first, Georgia, second, comments and questions?
So what was the original, um, expiration date?
It's this June.
Just soon. That we did it before, like this year.
So we did it ahead of time?
Yes.
We did it ahead of.
We did it ahead of time. I think that's, uh, you know, I wanted, you know, to make that out.
And just to, just to know, we typically, we've been trying to get away from addendums to the agenda, um, because we want the public to be able to see. This was ratified by the, uh, BTA at five o'clock, um, this afternoon and we, we were able to get a resolution from our attorneys to act upon it tonight. And we thought it was so important to show the BTA the support that we had and the work that they, we've been doing to get this, um, completed. Um, they really wanted it done before June thirtieth. I don't know why, Matt, but. And it was the work of the negotiating teams on both sides to have this happen and it's to be commended that this happened in such a short period of time. So I'd like to thank everybody involved, um, who worked on this and the board for the way that we handled it and getting it done in an expeditious fashion.
And I, and I didn't mean to, we got it done, but the collective team got it done at the time. So.
And I, I understood it that way. I didn't think it the other way.
I think that should include a compliment to our attorney team who worked very hard on this and that some members of that team are still at work on other contracts that are in the hopper.
Yeah.
And I'm pleased to see that we are cleaning up some of these expired contracts. And of course, it's great to have one, the big one, that's done actually before the deadline.
Absolutely.
That's great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Good job, everybody. Um, resolution zero six zero five one seven B.
Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the memorandum of agreement between the Beacon City School District and the Beacon Teachers Association concerning the early retirement incentive dated May twenty-third, twenty seventeen.
Is there a second? Georgia, comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Uh, resolution zero six zero five one seven C.
Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the memorandum of agreement between the Beacon City School District and the Beacon Teachers Association concerning the salary for an occupational therapist on the bachelor's schedule dated May twenty-third, twenty seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Georgia, comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried nine oh. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and the board is not expected to take action after executive session.
Georgia, need a motion. Is there a second? Kenya?